Right, there we go. So, welcome everybody, board members, officers and possibly members of the public who have logged in to witness our proceedings to the July meeting of the scrutiny board. And before I start and before I ask members of the board to introduce themselves, just wanted to go through for the benefit of the public a few notes. The public section of this meeting is being webcast via YouTube and following and that can be accessed following links on the meeting webpage, but I assume that anybody who's witnessing the meeting has already done that anyway. Having successfully conducted remote consultative meetings in June, scrutiny chairs, including myself, recommended that the same approach was taken for the July cycle of meetings and that's because of the extension really of the national Covid-19 restrictions in July, which meant the local health and safety advice remained regarding the logistics of physical meetings, including the 90 minute limit and reduced accommodation capacity. The key point, I suppose, is that under the consultative arrangements, we will not legally be able to take any formal decisions and some of the usual formalities that are normally contained within our meeting agenda will not take place at the start of the meeting. And ultimately, any recommendations that we make will require formal ratification and those will have to be referred for formal approval at the next physical meeting of the board. Right, okay, with that out of the way, I move to agenda item one, declarations of interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest relevant to the agenda before us today? Okay. I think, having slightly preempted the agenda, I am now going to invite members of the board to introduce themselves and I'll go through those alphabetically. So we start with councillor Jonathan Bentley.
Morning everyone, Jonathan Bentley, I'm the councillor for Wheatwood.
Yes, we have apologies from councillor Neil Buckley, who would be next on the batting list alphabetically. Councillor Katie Dye.
Morning everybody, I'm Katie Dye, councillor for Kilimbe and Seacraft.
The next councillor alphabetically would be councillor Bob Gettings, but he contacted us this morning to indicate that he will not be able to attend for personal reasons. So the next member is Jacob Goddard.
Morning everyone, councillor Jacob Goddard from Rounday Ward.
Hi. Councillor Arif Hussain.
Good morning everybody, councillor Arif Hussain from Gipton and Harhills.
Councillor Lisa Martin.
Morning everyone, Lisa Martin, councillor for Rounday.
Councillor Mohammed Shazad.
Morning everyone, councillor Mohammed Shazad from the Mortar Mead Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Nicole Sharp.
Morning everyone, councillor Nicole Sharp from the Temple News and Ward.
Councillor Jonathan Taylor.
Hello councillor Jonathan Taylor, Horseton Road.
Councillor Paul Wadsworth. Have we got Paul with us? I've not actually noticed him.
He's not joined the meeting yet.
Not joined the meeting and I'm councillor Paul Truswell, I'm the Chair of the scrutiny board and I represent Middleton and Bellisle. Okay, so moving on to the notes, I will ask the officers and executive board members to introduce themselves before the specific item for which they're in attendance. So moving on to agenda item two, we've got the notes, not minutes, but the notes of the last meeting, so I'll go through and if anyone's got any matters arising from those or any corrections or amendments, please shout out. So page five, page six, page seven, page eight and just to reiterate that obviously these can only be ratified at the next physical meeting of the board. Agenda item three is co-opted members. It's been the practice of this scrutiny board, as with many others, not to have co-opted members unless we feel that that would be helpful in terms of a specific inquiry or a specific agenda item. And my recommendation would be is that we continue that practice, if that's okay with with members. I see nods, I don't see any dissent. Okay, that takes us on to agenda item four and I think we've got a presentation from Eve Rudhouse. So if the officers, including Eve, can introduce themselves before Eve kicks off on that, please. So Eve.
Good morning Chair, good morning everybody. My name's Eve Rudhouse, I'm the Chief Officer for Culture and Economy and I have my colleague Fiona Bowlin with me, who's also going to be contributing to the presentation. Fiona?
Well, good morning everyone. Hi, I'm Fiona Bowlin and I'm the Head of Economic Policy.
And do we have Vanessa?
Morning Chair, yes, I'm here. Hello Chair, hello everyone.
Okay, and at this juncture, can I give councillor Hayden's apologies? Again, she's got a personal commitment which she needs to undertake, but she is hoping to join us later. So Eve, the floor is yours.
Excellent, let me just share some slides if I may. Let's get them on screen, everyone okay to see those and I'll just get them on full screen as well. Yeah, everyone okay to see those?
Yeah, it looks fine.
Lovely, thank you. So obviously we've submitted a report to scrutiny, but we thought it would be helpful, given the nature of this topic, to also do some slides to talk through. What we'll do through the presentation is give you the context for the piece of work. We'll give you an overview of the different work streams that are being undertaken for this piece of work, some progress updates and giving you a sense of the direction of travel and the next steps in terms of what we'll be doing between now and September in particular, when we will be taking an executive board report on this topic. So in terms of setting ourselves in context, we, when we think about our own personal experience, know that Covid-19 has really changed the way that we think about place, how we use our spaces, as well as how we travel, work and shop. So many of us today are taking part in this meeting from home, which isn't something we would have done before Covid-19. We've spent more time buying from our local areas, perhaps from local shops and independents in the past 12 to 18 months and less time perhaps travelling on public transport to go to office spaces and so on. That means that many of the sort of trends that were existing in the economy before Covid-19 have really accelerated. So flexible working and working from home was there for certain businesses and certain parts of the economy before Covid, but we've seen a huge increase in that and changes also in the way that people are spending their leisure time and why they want to come into city and local centres. And in some cases really, within the first six months of Covid-19, we saw changes that might, you might normally expect in an economy in five years happening in such a pace. And that means that cities like Leeds really need to think carefully about what that means for our city centre and for our local centres right across the city and what we need to do to be able to respond to that. And the other thing that we need to be mindful of is that some of these changes might be transitional because of the nature of Covid-19, whereas others actually probably will be structural, so there'll be permanent changes in the economy. And so in all of this context, back in the autumn, when we published the Economic Recovery Framework, we said that one of the things we needed to do was reset and renew and in resetting and renewing, thinking about some of these big issues and that kicked off this piece of work around understanding the future of city and local centres. And that's why we've been doing a number of pieces of work to make sure that we get our heads around what we need to do collectively in Leeds. So to set out the work streams that we've been working on together, the first work stream is one that's actually been primarily led by the core cities and key cities networks of which Leeds is a part. So earlier this year, the Core and Key Cities commissioned an organisation called MetroDynamics to undertake work which was to look at the future of urban centres and Leeds was chosen as the case study for a core city. And the report, which is included as an appendix in the papers today, was published in May and it presents findings and recommendations from the work that took place between January and May. It framed really a headline offer to government, setting out how the 36 core and key cities could deliver at least an additional 89 billion a year into the economy if productivity in the cities match the national average and if, you know, if there was a real focus on inclusive renewal. This is a theme that we're familiar with in our inclusive growth strategy, where we've previously made the arguments that if you focus on improving productivity in our core cities, you can create a huge uplift in the UK economy as a whole. The second work stream was around a public survey for members of the public and businesses to complete. It launched in mid-February and it ran over a six weeks period, which we received during that time over 1,300 responses and Fiona's going to talk through the findings of that survey a little later on in our presentation. The third work stream was a piece of work that we appointed, Arup, who we were talking about earlier, so Arup are a consultancy business and we appointed them to help us with some Leeds-specific research. Their brief was to understand how the city of Leeds and its local centres can adapt to the long-term transformational changes and challenges over the next 10 years. So unlike the MetroDynamics work, which was general across all cities, this piece of work is specific to us. The report's not yet finalised, but we are able to share what work's been undertaken and some findings which we'll highlight too. They, through their report, have grouped the main challenges and trends that we face in Leeds into five themes: living and working, leisure, culture and consumption, social value and inclusive growth, mobility and environment and net zero. And they've also used high-level economic scenarios to provide a hypothetical illustration of possible future scenarios that could occur following Covid-19 within the economic environment. Then if I just touch on the other pieces briefly that are underway, some of you may be familiar with a head partnership who work with young people and schools. And with the head partnership and with Arup being involved as well, we've set a challenge to young people to allow them to contribute their ideas and vision of the future in relation to centres and this will be supported with targeted resources and tasks and there'll be presentations made back to a panel of civic and business leaders around their ideas and we want to involve, include some of those ideas into our thoughts about the future. And finally, through the Common Purpose Legacy 150 Programme, which again focused on young people aged 18 to 25 in this case, we are kind of taking some of their thoughts and ideas from a recent programme that they ran, which was, which asked the question, how can we all work together to make Leeds a cleaner, greener place for everyone by 2043? And taking some of the output from that and also helping that to inform the so what question. And finally, just touching on engagement, this piece of work clearly is cross-discipline across council. And so Fiona has led regular discussions with officers from right across the council, including connecting Leeds, planning, culture and the green agenda. We've spoken to members and through our inclusive growth ambassadors and of course we've got a conversation today. And there was some stakeholder engagement undertaken as part of Arup's work and we intend to continue to engage with members, partners and stakeholders throughout this work and beyond because it's clear that this is going to be an ongoing theme. So that's a summary of all the work streams and I'll just move on to give a quick canter through the MetroDynamics work and the Arup work, if that's all right Chair, and then I'll hand over to Fiona to talk about the conversation.
Yeah, fine.
So the MetroDynamics work, you can see the report in the annex, but the key points to take away are that large urban centres are most affected by the Covid-19 pandemic and will be the slowest to recover. And the Covid-19 crisis has disproportionately affected more deprived neighbourhoods. This is something obviously we've seen through our health colleagues, but the MetroDynamics report looks at it through the economic lens. And city centres are presented as focal points for innovation and complex economic activity which presents us with an opportunity in recovery. And the increasing employment in exporting businesses will help close the productivity gap that was mentioned earlier. High streets need to adapt to suit new purposes, which I think, you know, we're very aware of and we've talked about this scrutiny before. And there are huge opportunities for city in the transition to net zero. So nothing that is necessarily radically away from some of the things we've been thinking about before, but hopefully brought together with all of the core cities. And what the, this is from the MetroDynamics report and really essentially the key things to sort of note is that we saw empty city centres as an iconic sort of symbol of the pandemic disruption and we know that workers and shoppers stayed away from city centres and we're sort of seeing long-term trends switching, like online sales for retail went from 20% in February 2020 to 35% by February 2021. And so it's just interesting to see that presented in the report and of course, if you take a look at detail, you can get into some more of the nuances in that report. And then finally, their conclusion around the inclusive renewal for the MetroDynamics report, their themes are around creating and supporting good work, driving innovation, building resilience into our economy, pivoting to net zero and the opportunities around that, catalysing city livability and health improvement and wider public service reform. And they provide some frameworks for how cities can think about that in the, towards the end of the report. And just a little note to say, on the kind of opportunities around net zero, we will be doing a piece of work later in the year to try and quantify that from an economic perspective, once we've got the bulk of this work out of the way through the policy team. Okay, so the work from Arup, so a quick overview of this now. So just to recap, we were asking them to look at the long-term transformational changes across Leeds, this was specific to Leeds. Their activities included research and bringing international perspectives into our thinking. It's included a workshop with a smaller stakeholder from across the city and a detailed session with council officers. It goes beyond the work of MetroDynamics, as I said, and we expect the final report to sort of be with us imminently, but the conclusions are really broadly in line with the three council pillars of inclusive growth, health and wellbeing and addressing the climate emergency or achieving net zero. Just to give you a little bit of a flavour of what we kind of expect to sort of see in the final report, some of the examples of the key findings, changing working patterns potentially posing a risk to the economic growth and business activity that we've seen in recent years in the city centre. So the agglomeration of jobs around knowledge-intensive businesses like digital businesses has been one of the key success factors for the city centre in the last few years and we'll need to watch and see how that develops going forwards. The role of centres needing to potentially be about more than retail and against, set against that, a real opportunity for culture and leisure as part of the future of centres. And I joined a session last week where I was talking to some colleagues from smaller towns and cities who are very much proactively looking at how they can introduce culture into their towns to sort of help with this balancing off. I think one of the strengths in Leeds is that we have got a really strong cultural sector right across the city and a lot of fantastic cultural community-based organisations, as well as big cultural institutions in the city centre. And I think there's a chance for us to think about how we capitalise on that to help with this revival. And successful centres are going to be really important to enabling Leeds to respond to climate change and the council has an important role in leadership and enabling some of these changes. Some potential areas for action, which obviously will be kind of, will be finalised in their report and then converted into some of the so what questions for us. Curating a diverse mix of uses to attract people back to the city centre, capitalising on culture and creative industries, as I mentioned, to bring people together, shape place and identity and support communities right across the whole of our local authority area, so in all of our towns and districts. Thinking about the 15-minute city and the 90-minute region concept, particularly in relation to addressing the climate emergency. Bringing nature and new and improved green spaces into centres and leading and convening, creating partnerships and mobilising people. So you'll see some of these themes come through as we start to shape up the so what piece. In terms of the next steps, we know we've got opportunities and challenges and we're well placed to build on our strong partnerships to address them. And there is an opportunity that is now there for us to really sort of galvanise with communities to create visions for centres where we build broad-based coalitions for positive change. At the same time, I think we need to be realistic about what resources we've got and therefore be creative about how those, how those coalitions can be built and effected. And we'll be working over the summer to, to bring together all of the pieces of work I've just mentioned and the piece that Fiona's just going to go through into the so what question for the exec board report. Right, over to Fiona now.
Thank you Eve. So I'm going to take you through some of the headlines from the survey we undertook earlier this year. The council research team has analysed a statistically valid sample of the responses and we've looked through all of the comments that were actually received in the survey. Just a caveat on some of this, this work was carried out during the second lockdown, so I think we need to be mindful of that when we're looking at the results. We asked people to tell us their views on how they thought they would work, spend and travel over the next 12 months and then out to the next two to three years. And we offered people the option for telling us about the city centre, their local centre or both, and the majority of people told us about both centres. Next slide Eve. So if I look at local centres first, people are tending to visit their local centres for retail, hospitality and meeting friends and this is likely to increase slightly or stay the same over the next three years. And it's expected to return to pre-Covid-19 level, so it is quite a positive sort of message that we're hearing in general about local centres. Over the next 12 months, 87% of people said they would visit more, all the same. And there's very few people, so 10% think they'll visit less actually. So there's a, there is a real difference there and real positive messages around local centres. Next slide please. So this is about the city centre and I think this is slightly different. So in the next three years, people will visit less for work, more for culture, theatre, hospitality and they'll visit broadly the same for leisure, retail and meeting friends. There's a stat in there about, that we've looked at, which is 95% currently visit the city centre less than before Covid. Given that this was taken in a lockdown, I think we have to kind of obviously keep that in mind. And people are expecting to visit either, so 45% would visit even more or the same. I'm highlighting sort of the fact around lockdown and when this was taken because as we unlocked and when the Covid numbers certainly were lower than they are today, footfall had started to recover. So, but it did remain below 2019 levels. I think round about somewhere between 10 and 20% lower on a weekend, lower during the week. So footfall has gone down a little bit as numbers have gone up, but the conversations we've had with retail have actually been really positive. So in terms of footfall being slightly down, spend was actually up particularly in that high-end retail. So I think there has been a real confidence certainly in the retail side about returning to the city centre. We're going to need to see how that pans out over the next few weeks and we are checking to see whether Leeds is in line with similar cities across the UK at the moment as well. Next slide please. Working patterns, this is really as you'd expect and we've seen this played out sort of across the country, but in Leeds, people are expecting to work from home more part of the time and move to more blended models of working. And this is most definitely in line with conversations we've also had with our top 150 businesses across the city. The conversations that we've had with those businesses, we are, what we're being told is that people are moving to a combination of office and homeworking that is dependent on their business and within their business on individual services. So it pretty much, it does depend on whether that is doable or not. It is also worth remembering and we've got a figure in there from West Yorkshire, that 57% of workers in West Yorkshire are in their usual workplace and were when this was happening. I don't think we have that bigger for Leeds, but I can check post this meeting. What we do know is that in Leeds, more people who can work from home, there are more people who can work from home compared to other parts of West Yorkshire. However, keep in mind that we have an awful lot of people in Leeds who work in the NHS and in healthcare and they are in their current places of work. Okay. Next slide. So spending, this is one of those areas where what we're seeing is a long-term trend that has speeded up considerably in the last 18 months. Spending online is not going away. We all have, you know, the Amazon delivery and yeah, other retailers are available obviously. The challenge in particular for our city centre is for retail to make their offer distinctive and different from what you're going to get online. So I think that's what we're going to be seeing probably more of over the next year to 18 months. We've got some sort of positive messaging around city centre spend, so people are buying more things in the shop when they're actually there. And also in terms of local centres, people are spending in their local centres and the vast majority are saying they will continue to do so. Next slide please. So we did ask questions around travel and I am really conscious that the, the transport team have done an awful lot more work in this area, but we wanted to kind of test some of this while we had the opportunity within this survey. And the main messages we've had back from travel are, you know, if people used a car before, they're going to continue to do so. That was one sort of clear message that came out. There were some positive messages around walking, so walking has increased and we think this will continue to do so over the next 12 months, that's what people are reporting. Although we're seeing that sort of potentially tailing off, but still greater than before. The biggest change that we've seen, and this is sort of a known issue, is around bus usage. So dropped from 20% to 5% at this point and from what people are telling us, may only rise to 14% over the next three years. So, you know, there is an issue and some of that is around sort of confidence, we think, but there's an awful lot more work done, being done around all of these issues with our transport team. And finally on this slide, you know, small growth in cycling, that was the other thing that was on there. And next slide please. I know Eve has mentioned this, but I did just want to kind of briefly touch on the work that we're doing with the head partnerships. When we did the survey, everybody who took part in that survey were adults. So this was, you know, we have got a breakdown of ages, these are people who are working age and people who are retired. And actually what we were not, what we were missing was that voice of young people within some of this. So that's why we're doing some of the work with the head partnership and to understand really what young people think about their centres, but we're doing it in a very different way. This is a much more creative sort of way of doing this. And so we're putting together a challenge, drug resource pack. I've seen we're putting together, it has actually been done, it is out now, asking young people to find their centre and show us the centres through their eyes. And we're asking them about what they think is really good about the centre, what could be improved and what are their hopes for the future. And we're inviting people, the young people to respond quite creatively so that, you know, they could give us a photo series, they could give us an interview, drawings, artwork, a poem, whatever they want to do, you know, we want to kind of hear through their, hear their views through there. The challenge has been launched in the last week and entries can be submitted until mid-September and we'll be doing some communications with head partnership around this. Everything will be considered really carefully and a group of shortlisted entrants will be invited to a Young Voice event at the end of September and we're anticipating that this challenge will be completed by October. Okay, Eve, back to you.
Thanks Fiona and Chair, this is the final slide. So just to wrap up really to talk about what our next steps are. So I mentioned earlier the officer group, which Fiona's been pulling together across the council and that group has been really successful and will continue on an ongoing basis to explore these issues and once we're clear on the so what questions and the actions we want to take, it's likely it may also sort of support some of the, taking some of those actions. The head partnership work, as Fiona mentioned, will run through to October. In terms of our communication and engagement plan, we want to continue to engage with elected members and senior officers. And although there will be an executive board report in September, that will be the end of the discussions around this topic because it will be an ongoing area of interest. So that board report should be at the, will be at the September board. And then we anticipate returning to the scrutiny board to update you on further work undertaking around over the coming, coming months. So thank you Chair, I'll stop sharing.
Okay, thanks very much Eve and Fiona. Do any members have questions? If while you're cogitating on that, I'll set the ball rolling. Could I just confirm, and perhaps it is in there, but were all the surveys undertaken online? Because obviously that means that people, A, are self-selecting and B, those who are not familiar with the mechanics of online consultation are probably excluded from this and obviously the board is very interested in the whole issue of digital inclusion and exclusion. I'll ask a couple more. The very helpful appendix regarding the Find Your Centre competition also lists all the centres within Leeds and clearly they cover a huge spectrum of size from the very smallest sort of almost rosh shops to something much more substantial. How are we going to prioritise in the end the resource that goes into the city centre and the resource that the end the resource that goes into the city centre and the resource that goes into some, if not all, of those local centres? So I'll, I've got more questions, but I'll leave it with those two, so it doesn't become, you know, too indigestible for you even Fiona.
Thanks, councillor Truswell. So certainly, the surveys were all online. I think that was probably down to the time when we were doing the work, we were in lockdown. And so realistically, officers, we couldn't run events in centres as you might have done if you wanted to do some engagement sessions across the city. So I think that's something for us to bear in mind in the ongoing engagement around the future of the city and local centres for us to take on board, councillor Truswell. And then in terms of the prioritisation question, we don't have any, we haven't sort of determined a particular formula or explored a particular formula around that as yet, to be honest. I think it's something that will be a challenge that elected members need to be involved in as well and discuss and work through. So I don't want to preempt perhaps some of the discussion that's yet to be had around that, councillor Truswell, if that's okay.
Okay. I mean, in the timetable that you referred to right at the end of your presentation, the period for member engagement seemed to be very small, seemed to be taking place in September, when the report was going to executive board in September. And I do think it's really important that members are involved, especially in the discussions about their own local centres, which they know as well, if not better than anybody, either in terms of executive board or offices. Because clearly, I think we would all subscribe to the view that local centres provide local employment, they recirculate money within the local economy, they play a crucial role in place making. And in many respects, given our priorities, there are also major implications for climate change in that if people can walk or cycle or easily catch a bus to the local centre, that obviously has a spin-off in terms of their carbon footprint. Okay, that was a comment. Katie, I'll bring you in now.
Hiya, yes. I think if I just kind of go through some of the notes I've made, some will be comments, some will be questions really. Just picking up on some of the things in your presentation, Fiona, I was struck by a comment that somebody had written that you quoted on the slide that said something about city centre being more inclusive and less about spending money. And I think that's really quite an interesting point. But certainly, I have a lot of comments made to me specifically by young people, really, that they like being in the city centre, but they don't have a lot of money to spend in there. And so they prefer to have things to do that aren't them going into big shops. And I've certainly had young people that I work with, both, you know, at school, but also in youth centres and kind of things that I do with my councillor hat on, saying that they like things like pop-up markets and kilo sales and things like that. So I don't know whether that's something that is worth us focusing on, that rather than going into the big retailers, which they kind of find a bit samey, us looking as a city to do a lot more of that. Because it is nice to be in town when things like that are happening, when it's something different than just walking around town and the same old offers, to find something round a corner and it be different. And, you know, just a lot of young people that I've talked to that have been excited about being back into town now that things have opened up a bit, have been excited by the vegan market or a pop-up shop. There was something, I can't remember what it was selling, but there was some little market with small retailers that popped up somewhere in town, and they really liked that. So I just think that's, that's something that we should do more of. I think it's, it works really well for young people. The other idea was about the green spaces. I think somebody had put on there, green spaces, less pollution. And people, not just young people, people of all ages are saying to me that they're really liking the new spaces that are appearing around town, the green spaces. And the other one was, somebody has said we need less traffic in town. And again, lots of people say, yes, we do. And it's nice to have those spaces without traffic. But people are going to be using cars still. And how do we square that circle? I think that's a really difficult one. People like to be in a town that doesn't have cars in it. But as your presentation showed, Fiona, people want to use their cars. I don't know what the answer is to that, but it's, it is a point that needs resolving, certainly as well with climate emergency hats on as well. And then my last one, which definitely is a question, is the Head Partnership Find Your Centre initiative. How will that be distributed? Is it going to go out via schools?
Okay, thank you, Katie. Before Eve and Fiona respond, can I welcome councillor Hayden? Welcome, Helen.
Hi, thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, I know you weren't really asking questions, councillor Dyke, but maybe just a couple of brief comments around your first points, and then Fiona can answer the Head Partnership point. I suppose what's helpful is it, the survey and the work we've been doing has actually also confirmed that some of the things that we've got in train are absolutely the right things to be doing. So the city centre park, that's, you know, now underway, and the green spaces that are already, as you say, there. And then even on Cookwood Street with that new green space, we've had some pop-ups there. So there's some interesting things to encounter, and that provides another space to be programmed in the city to provide the types of experiences you mentioned. And I know that working with city centre management and with Leeds bid, if for the city centre, we are trying to do lots of work around, you know, with independents in particular, thinking about how to facilitate that. And one of the upsides of COVID-19 is it's created some really interesting responses. So for example, Chow Down, the sort of independent food kind of location in the city centre is now going to become permanent, and people have really enjoyed that. So there's, there's, there's kind of, we've talked to the independent sector throughout COVID-19, and I think there's an opportunity for us to keep doing that and supporting them and nurturing that as well. So yeah, lots of things to do. I think, sorry, one more thing would be, I think it's an acknowledged piece as well, that we need to think about that sort of teenage age group in terms of things for them to do in both city and local centres. We've been quite good at starting to put children at the heart of our thinking and planning because of our child friendly approach to council. But there's still probably more to go in terms of thinking about that teenage age group and the kind of spaces and places they want as well. Fiona, do you want to answer the question about Head Partnership?
Yes, that's absolutely fine. So it's, there's a number of channels that it's going to be going out through. So it will be going out directly through Head Partner Schools that they, the Head Partnership do work with. Our voice and influence team will be also sending some of this out, as will Breeze Child Friendly Leeds. And it's going to go out through some of the youth organisations and our youth councillors, and we will be doing some social media as well around this. So we've left it open, so it can be done over summer as well.
Okay, Katie, anything you want to come back on?
No, good. It's good to hear you thinking about teenagers. And teenagers is my world. I work with them as a high school teacher, and I've got two of them of my own. So things that-
Is that a declaration of interest?
Definitely, yeah. So let's make, let's make the city centre teenage-friendly, and then they're all out of, out of the house. Thank you very much.
Okay, cheers. Thank you. I've got Jonathan Bentley, then Paul Wadsworth. Jonathan?
Thanks, Chair. I think Paul was ahead of me, but-
No, no, you were in there, I think, first.
Okay, okay.
No, you weren't.
I've got the floor now, Chair, so I'm-
You have, go on.
It's a very good report, and I think reading through it, a lot of it sort of overlaps with another report we were looking at later on, about the, the review of the update, the local plan, which sort of has some of the same issues in it, about issues we've got to address. So I may say some of these things later on. What I was particularly concerned about, though, was when you look at the list of centres, just being parochial and looking at my ward, but it's an example, there are no centres in my ward north of the Ring Road, and the two centres south of the Ring Road, one is Headingly and one is Meanwood. And they are pretty close to the city centre anyway. And but once you get into the large social housing estates north of the ward, in the north end of the ward, there are no centres listed. The nearest one is probably Horstford, which is not only a ward boundary, it's something of a cultural boundary sometimes as well. So I'm just thinking, what are we doing to bring this prosperity that we're looking at in, in the centres and the developments we're looking at in the centres, to those places which haven't got centres, to avoid a real inequality of opportunity? And again, it's particularly young people. I'm glad you're addressing that as a, as a separate issue. And having a nice city centre is all very well, but it's quite expensive to get to the city centre if you haven't got access to, to a car. So train or bus or whatever, we're not really close to train, so it's buses. And that, and so again, it's about this exclusion of great swathes of our population, which I'm concerned about. So I'll leave that as the question. And the other question is, we have on that slide, and I've not, I've not sort of done the numbers, I can't crunch the numbers on it, but we had on that slide that bus travel will not get back to pre-COVID levels. Do we have an indication of what alternative mode of transport people will be taking, or will they just not be travelling? I'll leave it at that, Chair. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. Eve?
Thanks councillor Bentley. Just taking the last one first, I think I have to defer to transport colleagues on that in terms of some more detailed research and survey work they've done. And it's perhaps something we can bring back councillor Truswell, either as a written note or to, to, to follow up on another discussion. On the sort of, on the sort of point about centres, I think we had to agree a particular scope for this piece of work. And Fiona can explain why we, why we picked the list that we did to focus on, which thing's important. It's not to say that we're not interested in looking at economic development and employment skills across the whole city. It's just that for this piece of work, it was very focused about particular issues that occur in, occurring in town centres and city centres. So Fiona, do you want to explain why we picked the list we did?
Yeah, that's fine. And also, if I can just really quickly say on that transport point that Eve said, remember that this is not necessarily a prediction. This is what people were telling us at the height of a particular lockdown. So that's not the same as saying this is what's going to happen. This was kind of their feeling at the time from what they were saying. In terms of the local centres, we actually just kept it in line with sort of planning and what planning their, you know, the hierarchy of centres that we've, we've got. And I realise that that's sort of, you know, it, it won't pick up everything, and it didn't pick up those very, very small centres as well. And it was just from the perspective of we wanted to do something quickly, we wanted to do something that would actually also tie in with sort of the, the planning framework and the way that that works, and recognise the imperfections. We are looking to see whether this is something that we run again. And if we do, about how we can then do that differently and pick up other things as well. So, you know, we recognise where the challenges are in some of this. But again, it's not to exclude lots of people, anybody was invited to input, who was able to input into that at that point.
Okay, thanks Eve and Fiona. Jonathan, do you want to come back?
Yeah. What, what concerns me is we have a report like this, which is not based on the whole city. It has been, for whatever reason, has been selective. And the further forward you move with these reports, the more, what's the word I'm looking for, the more authoritative they become, and you forget about the bits you've left out. And it truly just putting a marker down now that says, this doesn't really look at the whole city. It doesn't look at some of our very deprived neighbourhoods. Because again, I can only talk for my ward, but the areas that have been left out where there's no centres are the most deprived areas of the ward, the most excluded in terms of digital exclusion, transport and everything else. Excuse me. So I just want to make sure that gap is filled. And I don't want to, I don't want sort of going forward based on something which isn't for the whole city, and would just consolidate a lot of the exclusion that we have in the city at the moment. Hope that makes sense, Chair.
That's fine.
Yeah. I mean, hopefully those gaps are going to be filled in other ways. But obviously, Eve, if you want to come back on that.
Yeah, I completely appreciate the point councillor Bentley. I think the, the report is, was always intended, as Fiona said, to take views from everybody in the city. We've, we've not narrowed down any geography in terms of people's involvement. I think there's a limit, as councillor Truswell sort of indicated, around who took part in some of the surveys during the time because of the timeframe. But we'll take your comments on board in terms of the next stage of how we bring this together, so that we're not sort of omitting the issues that exist where there were no city or local centres. Again, I think she's just one piece of a number of pieces of policy research we're doing. Got an item later on the agenda around future talent, for example, which is about, again, about resources right across the city. And actually, it's something that isn't sort of a spatial-based piece of work. So just to reassure you, I suppose councillor Bentley, that from an economic policy perspective, there's no intention to exclude particular parts of the city in the thinking. And we'll take on board your feedback in terms of how we consider bringing forwards the recommendations.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Eve. And now councillor Wadsworth, belatedly and with apologies.
Thank you, Chair. For your acceptance, I would never want to fight Jonathan for a place on, on the agenda. A few comments and questions as well. The survey and the numbers, a thousand people responded only online, does give a sort of picture of a very small number, given the size of the city. And my question around that is, done in February, in the depth of the second or third lockdown, whatever you want to call it, would give a certain view of people and the people working from home at that time, what was one. I guess it would change if you went into April and be more positive. And I guess if you did it now, it would be falling back a little bit, because people are a bit conscious of the rates increasing. Is there any way that it could be done on a rolling basis? And you could take the sort of statistics from the last two months or whatever, because it's a very fluid picture, particularly around public transport. And the public transport is really interesting, moving on to that, is despite all the investment we have put into cycling in this city, which the costs have been massive, and in finance and in road space, because a lot of the cycling in the city, the provision has been at the expense of road space, we get a small growth. So that tells us we have to invest extraordinary amounts of money to get a medium growth and impossible amounts of money to get a moderate growth, I guess. That's what that tells us. The car use has been unchanged despite a number of measures which have reduced road space, which I don't think we've probably seen the impact of yet, because we don't have as many cars coming into the city centre. And overall, pretty much bus collapse, which probably is the most worrying to elected members, in the fact that the bus usage has collapsed and is not projected to come back a great deal, which for us who have outer area wards, must be something that we are all worrying about and keep us awake at night on the fact of when government subsidy goes off, how that service will actually pan out in the future. And that final point was really just to come back on councillor Dyke around spending money. I'm all taking the point that a lot of young people don't have money to spend. Unfortunately, with a city centre, if we don't have people spending money in the city centre, the businesses won't survive and the city centre will contract. That's really what happened with Debenhams. Nobody spent any money there, so they had to close. And that's the way life goes, it's the way business goes. So we do have to try to attract or extract some of the available money via retail and via the city centre, rather than the online retailers that somebody, I think an officer mentioned inadvertently, and by name, and others are available, as she said. But it's, it's a system really that we have to change. We have to get people spending. And I'll just really quickly say, I bought six major items for the house, which my credit card bill shows this morning. But I haven't been into the city centre to buy any of them. So that shows how my habits have changed. And, you know, I guess that's a picture of a lot of people. I know there's some comments and some questions there, I guess. Thanks, Chair.
Okay, Eve?
Yeah. So as Fiona mentioned, we would like to repeat the survey. I guess what we need to work out with colleagues from transport is whether there is something that they should be repeating that's more transport-focused versus the broader, the broader questions we had originally. But certainly councillor Wadsworth, we will be looking to repeat it. the broader questions we had originally, but certainly councillor Wadsworth, we will be looking to repeat it so we can see how things things change. And and then I think the other piece on city centre, one of the things I would say is that we've worked really, really collaboratively with different teams on the city centre in particular, but right across the city, the city centre management, for example, Visit Leeds, Leeds bid, Ottley bid, you know, with Peter Mudge in communities throughout COVID to try and make sure that we've kept both city centre and local centres clean, welcoming and so on. And what those, what interestingly, what external state called us say back to us. So for example, I'll say a a a manager of a major retail destination, a city centre, that happens to have similar destinations elsewhere in the United Kingdom, said that what we're doing in Leeds is recognised by others as being exemplary and encouraging people to come back and they've been able to attract. Although we've seen brands disappear like Debenhams, they've also been able to attract new brands into the city. But what it underlines, councillor Wadsworth, is how hard you've got to work at that and how hard you've got to work at that between partnerships to to keep both local centres and city centres attractive and the importance of investing in that to make sure that people still want to go there, whether that's for culture, retail or the all round experience. Fiona, do you want to say anything else about the survey at all?
Just very briefly, term in terms of things around transport, transport colleagues have far more detailed information. And this is that kind of, as you said, that moment in time. And actually, I would defer to them and the information that they've got and what they're collecting over this particular survey when it comes to transport. And I think we just need to remember that the bus, in particular, the bus use, that I think that that's probably the lockdown effect that we're seeing with that. But I'm sure we can kind of, you know, transport colleagues know far more in this area than what we've picked up through this survey.
Okay, thank you. Paul, do you want to come back?
No, I wanted to say it wasn't a criticism about how hard people are working across the council and across business. It just shows how hard you have to work to provide a small increase. And to get a large increase, that work is going to have to be so much passive. And in the case of the council, probably that investment is going to have to be so much massively increased. And that's going to transpire from the city centres into the district centres as well. And that's that's the problem it faces as well, is is the case. It wasn't a criticism in particular, it was just a an observation more than anything.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Paul. I think you highlighted one of the difficulties with a report like this. It focuses on a particular exercise and process. And Eve's touched upon the fact that there's already a lot of work being done in terms of city centres and district centres through officers and in some cases with members, through collaborative groups, with traders and others, and very much on an ad hoc basis. So I suppose it would have been helpful to have a little bit more on that. But there again, it would have moved away from the specific focus around the results of of the survey. But on the other hand, the work that is currently being done is something that provides examples of what perhaps what can be extended, especially in terms of of local centres and lessons to be learned and perhaps to identify some quick wins either in those areas or, if you like, transpose to 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 other local centres. And and just a final comment stroke question about the levelling up fund. We're all aware of the fund. I suspect that many of us as ward members are working with each other and with MPs and looking at bids for the future. But I'm just wondering, Eve, if you could elucidate on how far this work is going to impinge upon future levelling up bids? I suppose it's a bit too early to ask that question, but I'm still going to ask it.
Yeah, so so thanks, Chair. So we we obviously started this work before the levelling up fund was announced. And but what we what we hopefully, from this discussion, it's evident that this work that we've been doing will assist you and and others in sort of understanding what the right projects might be to promote for the levelling up fund and what you want to achieve from those projects. And so what Fiona and the team and myself will be doing over the summer is making sure through that relationship in the officer group, that we just try and help crystallise how some of this might be taken into account in some of those levelling up fund bids without preempting the process around around those bids themselves, ensuring that this work is useful in that process. And Adam Brandon, who's the lead officer on the levelling up work, is part of Fiona's officer group.
Okay, thanks very much. I don't see any other board members indicating that they've got any comments or questions to make. So I think we'll move on to agenda item five on the Future Talent Plan. I'm just looking at the list of attendees. This was supposed to be led by Martin Long, but I don't think Martin's able to join us. I think he's been diverted to another another meeting. So I think we've got Eve again. It's a bit like the the Roadhouse 2021 YouTube tour. I think we do have one other officer who I've got down on my list of attending. Minakshi.
Hi, Minakshi won't be attending.
All right, okay.
She's actually moving house today.
Oh, any old excuse. Right, okay, Eve, the floor is yours again.
Thanks. Apologies, everybody who love me. Martin may, if Martin can make it, he will join. He's he's had a meeting in the diary with DWP that he couldn't rearrange. So so I have got a few slides again, and it's not as long as the last presentation. So just to give you the the context for this piece of work. So our council, the Council Talent and Skills Plan was last published in 2017. And as a consequence, it doesn't reflect a lot of changes that have occurred in national policy since then and also the extra powers that we've achieved through devolution. And again, as I mentioned earlier on the previous item, when we set out the Economic Recovery Framework last year, we explained how underlying trends have been accelerated in the economy and how this demands us to have a more agile approach. So for example, digital adoption has resulted in a huge demand for digital skills and tools across all sectors. Retail's continued its transformation with major brands disappearing from the high street. And the race to net zero is creating challenges and opportunities for us. And another reason for doing this work is that whilst we've got some fantastic partners across the city, there's a chance for us to accelerate our collective progress, addressing unemployment, improving the resilience of those in work and supporting people and businesses to thrive as we recover from COVID. And a clear plan will also create confidence for investors and for existing businesses where it reflects their needs and they sort of identify with it. And we said again back in the autumn, when we published the Economic Recovery Framework, that we would need to refresh the inclusive growth strategy and start that process in 2022. And so this work will also help inform that. The primary aim of the project is to deliver a dynamic plan that will be owned and updated by the city as a whole to support people to develop and maintain skills and help them and businesses to become resilient in the face of change. We're proposing a three to five year timeframe. We want it to be very action focused, backed by stakeholders and focused on diversity and inclusion. And we want it to link to the Social Progress Index, which is our chosen strategic measure for progress on delivering inclusive growth. We're going to work with partners to develop more consistent data around this. So again, it's scrutiny. We often talk about the data around the labour market. So we want to to run a parallel piece of work where we look at those data issues and explore how we can get better at targeting actions by having better data. And we've currently got a workshop in the planning around that. If any members want to join that workshop, let us know. A steering group has been established, which is chaired by councillor Prior, and it has key partners on it from FEHE, sorry, Further Education and Higher Education, for anyone watching that doesn't know those acronyms, Business, Health and Social Care, Digital Schools and Communities. And how are we going to do the work? And we've appointed a partner called Clever Together, who have have been designing and building a digital engagement platform that will capture as many views as possible. It helps to generate this. So this is not a survey, this is not a survey approach. So what you won't get when you go onto this platform is 20 questions with very sort of closed closed nature of questions. Instead, you it will start with some challenge questions and people will be able to give their views on those challenge questions, discuss and comment with others, a bit like a sort of closed Facebook group in a way. And it's kind of a way to explain it and talk about their aspirations. But it's all done anonymously and it's monitored carefully so that if there's any issues, comments can be removed and so on, just to reassure members around that. What happens after you've had that main conversation is that Clever Together and Analyze all that conversation, they look at all of the 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 language that's being used, people's ideas and thoughts. And then you hone that down into a second conversation where you check and check and challenge the conversation and help generate the tangible actions that form the plan. And then the final, the final plan, the target is to take it to executive board in 2022. And we'll touch a bit on stakeholder engagement beyond the platform and just picking up on and some of the discussion we had on the previous item around engagement. So in terms of this piece of work, we're really keen to make sure we have a really wide range of voices included. And so we want to actively consult with councillors, with the combined authority and the mayor and the steering group, but regularly be engaging with council, business representative organisations like the Chamber of Commerce and the Federation of Small Businesses, the the higher education and further education sector, the schools and so on. And then sort of making sure we keep informed key sectors, private skills providers and other business networks. And then maintaining interest as well as at a wider level. And what we're currently doing at the moment, before we launch the big conversation in September, is looking where we've got opportunities to go to meetings that will be happening in some of these areas that happen regularly out through the city anyway, to talk about the work, to capture ideas and to then make sure that they are included in the platforms. This won't just be, you need to go to this platform, although that is the primary way for us to have the conversation. We will also go to forums that exist and and promote the discussion and bring that in. And that work is being undertaken at the moment. Minakshi is the lead officer on the on this work in Fiona's team in terms of overseeing that at this time. So the next steps are around the the main consultation, as I mentioned, launching in September. We would love elected member support to promote that. And then the second taking place in November, with a plan being completed through December with a name to take it to executive board in the spring. So that's a quick overview, Chair.
Okay, thanks very much, Fiona. Do any board members have any questions or comments at this stage? If while you're thinking of that, I can pitch in. I think continuing theme of our discussions around issues such as this and inclusive growth at the board have just focused, as you have done, Eve, on the need for training and reskilling and upskilling. Because as I think the report, as the report does indicate, we don't know how many jobs we create in Leeds, given its dynamic economy, lead to people coming into the city from outside to fill those jobs. And obviously, the more we can grow our own expertise to fill those jobs, the better, not just in terms of our citizens, but also the fact that we don't need as much housing, we don't need as much transport, we don't have the pressure on the infrastructure. So it has climate change and sustainability connotations as well. My second point is, have we got any clear thinking about how the devolution deal and particularly the extra money that's coming in regarding employment and training monies is going to pan out or is that still very much to be decided? And I think my my final point is, we've been quite successful in terms of working with anchor organisations, in terms of identifying jobs, particularly within the NHS. How many anchor organisations do we have now? And have we managed to extend beyond the public sector into the private sector, which I know has always been a kind of crucial threshold in terms of panning out the 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 anchor institution approach?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So I'll take the anchors question first, if that's okay. So we've now got 13 organisations in the Leeds Inclusive Anchors Network. We started with eight. And we have the most recent organisations to join are Northern Gas Networks and the British Library. And so we have a mixture of both very much Leeds based sort of institutions like ourselves, the City Council, but organisations that have a very large base in Leeds but are also national, like the British Library and NHS Digital. And Yorkshire Water and Northern Gas Network is probably the notable exceptions in the current network where, in effect, they're private, private businesses, but they see themselves as operating very much because they're in that utilities space in a similar way to the public sector. So and so that's the size of the the network at the moment. The 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 position with the private sector and working with them on the anchors network is that we did a bit, we did some interaction with the private sector last summer to talk, to explore how we would bring them into the network. And the the that got to a stage of kind of really that we felt didn't necessarily want to dilute the power of the network by inviting 20 or hundreds of businesses into the network itself. Rather, the approach that we're taking is to refine the progression framework. So for anyone that's not familiar with the anchors work, the professional progression framework was developed with the Joseph Brownery Foundation. And it is completed every year by each anchor institution. It has a number of theme areas and it's a way for that institution to focus on how it can become more effective as an anchor in our economy. And we've basically created an adapted version of that for the private sector. And it's currently being tested with five private sector businesses, and some of whom having some support to complete it, some of whom are doing it themselves without support. And then we're going to see, we're going to sort of analyze, we're going to sort of review how that's gone with the aim, if that's, if that goes well, of extending that to up to 20 businesses and then taking it from there again. So 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 that's the position on the anchors work. And I'm sure, Chair, we might want to bring an update on the anchors work separately at some point to scrutiny, actually. Just on on the devolution deal, as Martin isn't isn't on, I can't give you sort of a detailed answer into how that's going. But my high level answer is that there's still quite a lot to work out. So it's not a completely done deal in terms of understanding how that will work through. We've had some gain share monies that have come through for employment and skills. And of course, we've had gone through the first process of being commissioned by the combined authority for delivering our adult skills work at the moment. And so we can either send a little note about how that's going or we can revisit it in the meeting when Martin's here, councillor Truswell.
Okay, I mean, I think on our work programme at some stage in the future, there will be the usual kind of panoramic updates on inclusive growth strategy work and that might fit into that quite quite nicely. So I'm sure I'm sure Becky's making a note now to remind anybody that it needs to be included. Okay, so on on the issue of growing our own, for want of a better expression, and I know it's very difficult to determine that dynamic, but I think we all know to some degree it is happening that we have a very dynamic local economy, we're creating lots of jobs, we're introducing new employers. But a lot of the people coming in to fill the jobs that they're creating are coming from outside. And I'm I'm just wondering how far we can ever refine our view of of that dynamic? And if there is anything we can do to to stem it, for want of a better expression?
And so thanks, Chair. So we just, we, as I mentioned, we're looking to sort of run a workshop around trying to consider what other types of data we can bring together to get a more detailed and more sort of real time feel for what's happening on the labour, in the labour market. And we've approached ODI Leeds to work with us on that. So we're scoping that up at the moment. So again, just for anyone who isn't familiar, ODI is the Open Data Institute Leeds. And we work with, we've worked with them in the past on a range of areas around data. So I I can't at this stage probably give you a sort of an answer about whether that's possible, Chair. But I think what we can do is put that in as a as a sort of how might we question into that process. So how might we understand better who works in some of the large organisations? And I suppose the only additional thing to say is that, you know, we are the major economic centre for West Yorkshire, Yorkshire, you know, and the wider Yorkshire region. So naturally, we will have people coming into Leeds, working for employers from a much wider catchment than Leeds. So the interesting, I suppose, the the challenge for us is making sure that Leeds residents are well skilled up to be able to secure some of those jobs in within that within that context. So yeah.
I suppose the distinction I'm making is that, as you say, there will be people travelling in from West Yorkshire, maybe further afield, but they are domiciled, for want of a better description, in their local area. They've not moved to Leeds, they may do in due course, but they don't move to Leeds. And therefore, there's no requirement of Leeds to provide that extended infrastructure with all its pressures and lack of funding, et cetera, that people moving from further afield, moving, you know, relocating. Okay, you mentioned, and it's triggered another question. I noticed there's no more questions or comments being Okay, you mentioned, and it's triggered another question. Um, I noticed there's no more questions or comments being indicated by board members about data. And clearly, one of the points that we've reiterated ad nauseam during our discussion about inclusive growth strategies, that while it has a number of aspirations. And while there are a number of initiatives already beginning to take place within it, such as the anchor institutions. It's how we measure progress. And I'm just wondering where we are with that, that dataset to measure the pro, the progress, which obviously, you know, officers have been working on now for some time.
Yeah, Fiona, do you want to come in and give an update on that? Actually, we're obviously leading on that work.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. So councillor, uh, Truswell, we've been working with an organisation called the Social Progress Imperative and they're an international NGO. Um, and we've been working with them over the past probably year now. And we have, uh, been refining the data that we can use. And we've now actually got enough local data that can be, that captures a consistent picture from the ward level. Um, so we are, have got enough to run the model that the social progress imperative, um, own. So the, what will be in there is the data is primarily, it's social or environmental and it's outcome focused. And it sits alongside sort of GDP as an economic measure. And that first, um, version that we run, it won't be perfect because it's basically what we can get. Um, but we should have that very shortly. They're going to, we're going to be running that model over the summer. So we will be able to take something to scrutiny, um, on that, um, later this year, if that's okay.
Okay Fiona, that's excellent. Right, no other indication of questions or comments. So we'll move on to the next agenda item. Which is the local plan update. Um. I think we have got Adam and I think we've got a couple of colleagues of Adam's and we've also got councillor Hayden, who may at some stage wish to contribute to this discussion. And as I said at the pre-meeting, but just to reiterate for the purposes of the public meeting. This is something that automatically comes to this scrutiny board and that we have a corporate responsibility. For looking at anything to do with the local plan or wider planning issues. So without any more ado, um, Adam, I don't know if you want to lead off on this and I think you've also got a presentation.
I do, yes. Um, thank you. Um, before I start with the presentation. Um, I just want to introduce colleagues that we've got on the call as well, who will be available to answer, uh, any questions. Um, so, uh, we've got Caroline Harris, Catherine, Catherine Holloway, Heather Davis. And Daniel Golland, who are topic authors who've helped, uh, prepare the material. Um, so, um, yeah, so thank you very much, uh, for having us. This is about trying to give more information about the, the local plan update consultation, which started on Monday on the nineteenth and runs until thirteenth of September. Um, and we've, um, produced, uh, the consultation material, which you can start to see on the right hand side of, of the slide there. We've got a website on the bottom left. Um, so have the next slide please Becky. Okay, um, actually Becky, do you mind if I present my own slides? Is that okay? Because I made some changes this morning. Is that okay? You know, just swap it around. Thank you, sorry. Just bear with me on this one, please.
Well, she'll be slapping your wrist.
Sorry. Here we go. So share screen. Does that display okay? Or are you seeing my notes?
Uh, from my point of view, it displays okay. And I'm going to reach for my reading glasses because it's a bit on the small side. Can everyone else see it? Okay.
If not, we're cool. So we can go back to, um.
Can you make it full, um, screen?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Can, can you switch the display settings so that we see, yes, the student, what presenter, that's it.
There we go, there we go. The, the big change that the eagle-eyed amongst you will have noticed is that I changed the date to today's actual date rather than yesterday. So apologies for that. Okay, thank you. Um, I'll move on to the next slide then. Um. Um, so. We've got, um, what, what we're consulting on here, um, i- is the local plan update. Um, and it's a selective update, um, to the, to Leeds local, uh, local plan. And its focus is on addressing the climate emergency through place making and resilience. And the big question that we're really asking through a series of topics, which I'll take you through. Um, is, is this the right scope for the local plan update? There's lots of topics that a local plan update can touch on. So is this the right scope? Um, and what do consultees, such as scrutiny board, feel about the matters? And issues that are raised within, uh, the material and have we missed anything? Um, so we've got a public consultation that's a formal consultation within, uh, the regulation eighteen of the Town and Country Planning Act. Um, and that's running for, for eight weeks, as I said, until the thirteenth of September. And we're guided, uh, on the consultation by the interim statement of, of community involvement, which came in, uh, as a response to the restrictions of COVID nineteen. That's a, a mainly online consultation, which is designed to be accessible, mobile friendly. Uh, uh, and as I say, as accessible as possible and with, with new ways of trying to present materials such as, um, online, uh, videos, uh, summaries. Uh, and a lot more kind of attractive visual style than perhaps you might be used to, uh, with a traditional planning consultation. Um, so we've got, um, five topic areas. Um, and it's important to, to say that we're looking at this, um, initially. Um, through the lens of clearly, uh, the climate emergency and carbon emission reduction. But we want to take a, a more root and branch approach to that. There's also a lot of other topics that are related to simply reducing carbon. That are very, uh, intrinsically linked. Um, and so the graphic that we've kind of, the, the, the work that our, our colleagues in creative services have developed for, for us. Kind of draws on those themes where we've got that kind of root and branch. So we've got the tree of the five themes there. Um, so we've got carbon reduction, um, we have flood risk, we've got green infrastructure, place making and sustainable infrastructure. And I'll obviously take you through more detail on those individual topics. But the question obviously comes back to why are we focused on, on these matters? Um, and as you'll all obviously be aware, uh, and I'm sure viewers will be too, Leeds, uh, declared a climate emergency, uh, on March two thousand and nineteen. Um, and that then flowed into a direction from full council that the, the next review of the plan. Um, in Leeds should include, um, trying to, um, address some of these issues. We've worked very closely with development plan panel who have agreed the, agreed this scope. Uh, and also with the Climate Emergency Advisory Committee as well, in conjunction with the executive member, of course. Executive Board approved, um, the consultation, uh, last month. But also it's based on our own monitoring work and the evidence of assessing our own plans, how they're working, how they're performing, uh, using, um, current up to date evidence. Uh, and guidance as well. On the right hand side, you'll see quite a small graph. Don't, don't worry too much about the detail of it. But what that's trying to show is that. Huge strides have been made since two thousand in Leeds in terms of reducing our emissions. We've reduced emissions by about forty percent. Um, which is obviously, uh, an important, um, change and reduction. Uh, but what this graph shows, and it's, um, produced by the Leeds Climate Commission, is that the initial work that we've done will only get us so far. And if we continue the way that we are doing, then that, that those improvements will begin to plateau. Um, and that we won't make, um, that our aspirations to be net zero by two thousand and thirty or indeed by two thousand and fifty. Um, so what the, the black line, uh, shows is a whole series of different interventions that the Climate Commission considered. And some of those relate to planning, but many of them relate to, to issues that are outside of planning. Um, and are being dealt with by all the colleagues, such as through the connecting Leeds strategy, the White Rose Forest work. Um, and work on things like retrofitting housing, um, which has been dealt with, uh, by, by other parts of the council. So certainly not suggesting that this is just a, a planning initiative. Uh, but planning has its role to play in terms of reducing the emissions of buildings, uh, and decarbonising energy and carbon sequestration. So the first topic is, is carbon reduction. Um, and this, this is focusing on, on, on a series of interventions. And we're asking the question of, of where we want to get to, uh, with these. Um, so there's a few ideas that we're introducing. And what all of the topic papers try to do is, is try and give a, an easy to read, uh, background to the topic, introduce some of these technologies. And then ask, uh, questions about whether people believe that these should be in the scope of the plan. Uh, and any ideas they might have about how we can introduce them, uh, into planning policy. So when we look at things like whole life cycle carbon emissions, that's a fairly, uh, recent, um, kind of idea. But it goes beyond just the emissions from a building when it's in use and considers, uh, the whole life cycle of a building from its construction. The, uh, the, the creation of its materials to construct it, the transportation of the materials. All the way to the other end of its life in terms of its demolition and how, uh, carbon friendly that is. Um, we then look at issues like, uh, carbon, uh, zero developments. Um, so whether in Leeds. You know, how we are going to get to having a zero carbon developments as well. Uh, and that's in terms of operational use. We look at sustainable construction, which is related to those two, those, those first two themes, but whether we should have a standard in Leeds. Whether we should look at having our own bespoke standard or whether we should be using, um, currently adopted standards that are a bit more internationally and nationally recognised. Such as Briam, which is just one example. Uh, there are others. So, uh, that's, that's related to what we could do about buildings and their energy efficiency. Um, there are also issues in terms of renewable energy generation, um, whether we want to set targets for things like solar and wind. Uh, and we're seeing a lot more applications coming in through the system in terms of, uh, solar energy. Uh, we don't currently have, uh, a clear policy basis, uh, for the determination of those applications. Um, so whether we should, should be having that, whether we should be allocating land for it, whether we should be having targets set for it. Um, heat networks is also looked at in this chapter. Um, we obviously have a really successful heat network, um, in, in Leeds. And it's working really well connected, um, to the roof. Um, the question is asked whether we, we should go further in that, should that be expanded? Um, and whether a policy might need to change, uh, to allow for that. Um, or whether better guidance could be issued to make sure we're making the, the, the absolute most of, of that initiative. And finally, a topic that was energy storage, which we have very little, uh, um, sort of commentary on in the current local plan. Which is if we're generating a lot of renewable energy, where do we store that when it's not being used? Um, so do we need to set targets for that? And these, these facilities are essentially large batteries. Um, when they're on kind of industrial scale, locally, they can, you can have, um, batteries within, uh, new houses as well. Um, so do we need to allocate land? Do we need to set targets? So those are the kind of areas that are trying to be explored through the carbon reduction paper. Moving on to flood risk, which is obviously an issue that, that Leeds feels most, um, most keenly. Um, it's one of the, the ways that climate change, um, most, um, damagingly, um, affects us in Leeds. Um, although if, if your room is as hot as mine is, I suspect, um, urban heating is an issue as well, that people are starting to feel more keenly. Uh, but clearly flood risk is a huge, huge issue for the city. And what we're looking at is, um, we're, we're updating our evidence through a strategic flood risk assessment. Um, and trying to interrogate what that says and what that means about whether we need to go further. Um, in terms of avoiding land, um, uh, for development, uh, to make sure that we're, we're minimising flood risk. Um, there's a delicate balance there because we also recognise that there's, um. A lot of inherent sustainability within some of our urban areas that are vulnerable to flooding, but are also very accessible, um, to services. And that touches on some of the themes that Fiona and Eve, um, reported earlier on, in terms of how people get to, to places. So there's a, there's a balance to be struck there that we need to, to look at in, in more detail. Uh, we also want to enhance the resilience of, of new developments. We're seeing a lot more, uh, development that's bespoke, say for, for, for elderly people. Do we need to look at new and stronger poli-, oh, newer, stronger policies to ensure that that, um, that policies are fit for purpose on that? Um, do we also need to look at, um, expanding, um, areas of functional flood plain? So these are areas of land that are deliberately flood, uh, to protect areas downstream, uh, from flooding. Um, and finally, we're, we're looking at, um, how we better use, um, SUDs and other porous materials and make, make use for natural flood solutions. Uh, to ensure that, um, we're making the most of, of these kind of interventions in new developments. Um, so that, um, flooding can be dealt with, um, locally and at source, rather than it becoming a problem later on down the, down, down the line. The third topic is, is green infrastructure. And as we've, we've seen through the, um, the, the pandemic. Uh, I think the importance of, of this issue has become, um, even more profound in terms of the access that people have to, to green infrastructure. And their sense of connectedness with it. I think there's a, there's an increasing divide, I think, between, um, the people who do have ready, ready access to it and those who don't. And that's been most felt, I think, during the, the worst of the lockdowns. So, um, this policy area sort of has a number of themes again, as the others do. So how, how do we go about increasing, uh, tree planting? We've, we've, we've have targets set through the, the, uh, White Rose Forest work in terms of doubling, um, Leeds's tree canopy. What contribution can planning make to that? How can we protect existing trees better? And how can we make sure that more trees are delivered as part of, um, new, new schemes? Um, and we already have policies about providing, um, new trees for those that are lost. But that doesn't really take into account, uh, what we call a carbon sequestration value of trees. So I, how much carbon they can actually store. Um, so we're, we're, we're considering ideas for how we could go further on that and how planning can help do that. Um, we're also, what, we're also wanting to make sure that, um, we're, we're, we're putting, uh, more space, uh, for biodiversity and nature conservation. You may have seen that with the, um, the, the environment bill going through parliament at the moment. Um, that there's a requirement for a minimum of a ten percent biodiversity net gain for new developments. Does Leeds want to go further than that? Um, do, do consultees wish us to go further than that? And how do we practically do that? Um, we also want to maintain, um, uh, sorry, enhance our existing policy, uh, framework to, to ensure that we are. Um, identifying, improving, protecting and enhancing our existing, um, GI. Um, and also the issue of green space in particular, um, we, we focus on, on the city centre because it's an area that's, um. An issue of provision of green spaces keenly felt. A lot's been done in, in recent years, as I think was touched on earlier, to improve, um, open space in, in the city centre. And clearly with the delivery of airpark, that's going to improve further. Uh, but is there more that, that could be done? Um, on that, can planning policy be stronger, um, to help deliver more, more green spaces? We also look at, um, a local food production as well in terms of whether people would like to see that, um, as part of new developments. So whether they'd like to see that more strategically delivered in larger sites across, across the, the city council area. The fourth topic is about place making and that, and that brings a lot of these themes together. Um, so, you know, how do we, how do we connect people to places? Um, and we heard, I think in earlier slides, um, from even and Fiona about the sort of fifteen minutes and ninety minute connections. We're, we're looking at twenty minute neighbourhoods, but I don't think we need to get bogged down in, in, in the semantics of that. I think the principles are, are still the same. How do people, um, access what's on their doorstep? That's clearly become so much more important as a result of the pandemic. Um, so we're asking whether the twenty minute neighbourhood, um, is something that people would like to see in Leeds? And have they got any ideas about what that really means to them? We try and explain it through the material, but it might mean different things to different people. So we want to have that debate. Um, but also how we might go about achieving that, that, that level of accessibility to services. Which, which became so crucial during the pandemic on people's doorsteps. We're also looking at, um, related to that, things like locations for growth and the importance of, of active travel. Um, and, and where we're putting growth in the most sustainable places. This plan isn't, um, allocating sites for, uh, for, for housing or employment. But, but, but does look about how, um, how sites may be considered in the future, uh, for, for such uses and where they may go to be most sustainable. Um, and then we look at detailed design matters. So, yeah, how could we, uh, increase, um, our design guidance to ensure that we're bringing a lot of these concepts of GI flood risk? So we're getting sort of, you know, double whammies and, and triple wins in terms of not just preparing a space that could be, um, a pond. Um, but could also act as, uh, you know, flood risk, uh, deterrents as well. Uh, but also really attractive place to be and also increasing health and wellbeing and also the value and attractiveness of developments. Finally, um, the last topic is called sustainable infrastructure. And this is a collection of, of topic areas in many ways, um, because it looks at, um, HS two, uh, mass transit. Leeds City Station, Leeds Bradford Airport and, uh, digital connectivity. Um, so we, we need to be very clear, uh, with issues like HS two and mass transit. That the, the, the planning documents will not determine whether these schemes go ahead or not. Um, they're clearly dealt with at a different, um, organisational level. Um, but that doesn't mean that we can't have planning policies to help, um, maximise the, the benefits of these schemes. Um, and, and potentially, uh, mitigate, um, some of the harms, um, if, if, if that is to be what, what, what happens. Um, so it's about making sure that the quality of permeability, um, how we use land around these developments. And not maximise opportunities, uh, during, say, construction where land may be, um, left vacant. What we can do about that to, to make them more attractive and useful. Um, Leeds Station obviously is heavily linked to HS two as well, um, and, and how we can. And, and how we can have a policy framework to, to improve Leeds Station and help with the work that's clearly already started in terms of that. Leeds Bradford Airport is obviously a highly emotive issue. The, the council has already granted planning consent for a new terminal building and increased flights. And that is currently with the Secretary of State, as I understand it. We're not asking people to comment on, on the nature of those because, as I said, they've already been determined by the council. But how we manage the future growth of the airport beyond that application is still something that the planning policy can have an important say in. So we're asking that question of what people might want to see in such a policy, if they agree that it should be part of the scope. And finally, and certainly not least, certainly given what's happened over the last 18 months, we try and cover the area of digital connectivity. And this relates to the, the quality of broadband in new developments. We generally see a high degree of, of, of high speed broadband in new developments, but not in all. And we're wanting to explore new policies to ensure that, that that becomes, becomes a standard to ensure that people do have very good access to, to, to the internet in, in all new developments. So just to give a bit of a breakdown in terms of where we are in the, in the, in the stages and the process, we're currently out to consultation. Obviously, we'll use this winter to, to go through those responses and start to develop realistic alternatives and test some of those alternatives to see which are the most effective in addressing some of these visions and objectives. And then we'll start to draft detailed policies. Well, then hopefully start to consult on those draft policies spring next year. And then with submission, examination and adoption, finally with an examination in public happening in 2023. So yeah, that's the, that's the final slide. We're obviously very keen to hear the views of scrutiny board on, on, on the consultation. And as I say, the consultation runs until the 13th of September. We have a website there that there's a link for and an email address as well. So I'll just.
Just what Adam, we're all waiting.
I'll stop, I'll stop sharing is what I was going to say, sorry.
Okay, Helen, councillor Hayden, you wanted to come in.
Thank you very much. I just want to say how pleased and proud I am of this piece of work. And I'd like to thank Adam and the team for all the work that they put into it. And the fact that they're going to consult with young people, with elderly people, with, you know, all facets of our community here in Leeds. And it's a really important piece of work. And I'm just delighted with it. So I hope everybody will log on and have their say and encourage as many people, other people to do so as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen. I don't have any indications of questions or comments at this stage, so I'll set the ball rolling, hopefully. I think one of the difficulties we've got with the planning process, both as elected members and citizens, is just our little power, increasingly little power, if that's not a contradiction in terms. We have to mandate and ultimately enforce various aspects of what we want to achieve. Now, I appreciate that the past local plan in terms of sustainability and climate change has had to fit in within a legislative framework of previous legislation. And that actually, the reason, the very good reason, as helped councillor Hayden said, for this update is that in declaring a climate emergency and setting targets, we've actually created even greater challenges. And that's the reason for the update and not simply saying, well, it fits within past legislation. So, you know, the, the jobs are good. And however, does this update or elements of it, once it pans out, and clearly we're going through a period of consultation, give us any more teeth in terms of what we can mandate through the planning process? And if necessarily, necessary enforce, because as I say, that's the real frustration. And looking through the documentation, and I made this point, Adam, at Chair's brief, it's very aspirational. I'm sure that most of the people responding to a consultation will say, yes, 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 to all the components. But I'm not sure we've made it absolutely clear that these, many of these are aspirational. And when push comes to shove, we won't actually be able to make them parts of a planning permission that we can then ultimately enforce. So that is always a concern of mine, and I think it's probably shared by other councillors and certainly, you know, members of the public who take a particular interest in planning issues, broad or local. Sorry, that's quite a long winded comment stroke question, but I think there are questions within that.
Yeah, no, I, I think, I think that's, that's, that's very clear, councillor Swell. Thank you. I think that's, it's a good issue and you're right. It is an issue that's, it's the hot sort of button topic, isn't it? About how, how deliverable some of this is. You're right, it is an aspirational document. We are, we are at the vanguard, I think, nationally of trying to achieve some of these standards. I don't think we should shrink away from that. You know, I think we should be positive about, about trying to lead the way on this. I think whether these things have teeth will relate to the strength of our evidence. If we can work with the industry to demonstrate that this work is viable and deliverable, then it will be enshrined in policy. If it's enshrined in policy, then applications will have to adhere to it. There's a long way to go, as you say, but there's no reason to believe that, that these will just be policies that can be ignored. You know, we can set high standards and we can expect them to be delivered because if we go through a rigorous examination process, that will test our evidence to make sure that this is deliverable and it won't be able to be found sound unless it is deliverable. So I think, you know, we, we, I don't want to preempt the results of the consultation. So I don't know what's going to be those results or what the detailed policies might look like quite at this stage, although obviously, as you can imagine, we've got, we've got some ideas. But we're confident that if we can demonstrate that through evidence, that, that, that these policies will have teeth, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan. And this time you were in order.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah. I, I, I enjoyed reading this because I, I kept ticking things and saying, yes, that's right, that's right. So well done for that. But just following on from, from councillor Truswell's comment about enforceability, the, you know, how, how much we can actually get in. I read somewhere in the report and I'm just trying to find it and I can't. The, the government is also looking at changing the M P P F or amending that. And there is, so I'm just wondering how, it's, it's really the same question as the chairs. How those two things are going to go together and will, will changes to the M P P F affect what we can do when it comes to, when it comes to the examination? That's my question. Just a couple of comments and I will put most of my comments, to be honest, on, on the consultation because I, you know, I'm, I don't want to just go through and say everything. But the ones I think, what I'd really like to do is to, to look perhaps how individuals in the city can play a part. So there's lots of things about developers and whatever. But how we can impact on individual choices. And, you know, there's a simple one there, limits to the paving over front gardens for flood. You know, I get lots and lots of questions. People ring me up and say, oh, my next door neighbour's just, you know, ripped up all his, his lawn, he's got big slabs and, you know, he's turning his front, front garden into a car park. Is there anything, anything planning can do? And it's always difficult to say, oh, yes, they can, no, they can't, you know, some, something like that. And on the front, on the sort of the gardens point, again, it's about individual choices sometimes, but they don't always take the choices that we like. You know, people ripping up trees, ripping up hedges, putting up high hedges, making their, their houses compounds. And that has obviously the impact on wildlife, biodiversity, all those sorts of things. And it's how much as a, a planning document can you impose on those individual choices? And I have views on that, but I've been to see how from a planning point of view, it's easy with a developer because you say, if you don't do this, we don't give you, and you don't make any money. For someone who's saying, well, I don't want my hedge there, I don't want that tree there, that's my choice. But we say, no, you've got to have it there because it's part of a wider, a wider, a wider issue. That's probably all I'm going to say, actually, because I've, I've rabbit John, excuse the pun, for, for a while. The other point I do want to make though is, again, it's coming back to this place making and car parking standards. I, I don't sit on the plans panel anymore, but I did for several years. And parking nearly always comes to be the one that you, you know, if it's a small development of flats, how many parking places we have, if it's an extension, what's this doing with parking? And parking and therefore the car seems to dominate decisions. And how do we move away from that? And, and are we really prepared to bite the bullet and say, well, actually, we're not taking the car into consideration on this? We're taking in wider, we're taking in wider things. You know, some developments, we're able to say, well, actually, if you live there, you'll have to learn to live without your car. I, I know some parts of Nottingham in the Bay sort of heritage parts, there were flats there and when they're up for sale is quite clear, this is not suitable if you want to park your car close to, you know, and, and planners have taken a bit in the bullet on that. And I'm just wondering how, if we're really prepared to do that. And it also then flows into parking restrictions, say in the city. Are we prepared to make it really difficult for people to bring their cars into the city? I'll leave it at that, Chair. It's a bit of a ramble, but.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. It's interesting because I picked up at Chair's brief on your example of replaying, replacing porous surfaces with impermeable ones. And that's almost a test of what the planning process can and cannot do. But Adam, over to you.
Thank, thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Bentley. The, the issue of things like the M P P F, let's, if we start with that one. The, the M P, M P P F is obviously a key part of, 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 of what we do at a local level. We have to implement our policies in accordance with, with national policy. And it's interesting that just two days ago, actually, changes were made to, to the M P P F. Which actually I think were very helpful in many respects because they, they, they made more reference to, to mitigating climate change. And what, what that should be enshrined in what plans are trying to do. So I think that gives us some confidence in, in, in what, what we're doing. But you're absolutely right. Further changes, as we tried to detail in, in the report, and certainly to executive board and development plans panel, is the risk of that. You know, if, if, as was mooted at the, the, the planning white, through the planning white paper, that there might be a national set of development management policies. And therefore councils weren't able to have their own policies, well, that would obviously have a huge impact on our ability to pursue this agenda. The noises on that seem to have gone a bit quieter. So I'm not, I'm not sure that that is what the government's intentions are anymore, but we'll obviously have to wait and see about that.
Especially following a certain by-election. Sorry, I'm telling you, Adam, ignore that.
I think we need to, we obviously need to sort of embrace that, that general direction that's in the M P P F as it currently stands today. And obviously be mindful of what's coming up in the future. The risk is that if we, if all we did was wait until the perfect suite of national policies were in place and then we decided to move on, on local policies, we'd be too late, I think. Because as you, as you know, as you can tell from the timetable that I set out, it takes a long time to create and adopt new planning policies. So we have to, we have to jump a little bit early if we want to be ambitious about that. But I don't think there's anything to fear in the M P P F at all. I think it's supportive of, of, of trying to, of local authorities making strides to, to tackle a climate emergency. And legislation obviously requires us to do that as well. In terms of your points about individual choices, it's a really good point and we've had that debate internally quite a lot. You're right, we can set policies that are quite clear for, for developers. It is harder for individual choices. If it's individual choices that don't require planning permission, then there is a limit to what the planning system can clearly do. And the example you raised about from gardens is a, is a very good one because as we say in the material, we asked the question of whether people think we, we should go further on, on that. But what we do say is we acknowledge that there's a limit to the planning system here because as long as people put porous materials in, it doesn't require planning permission at the moment. So what we were discussing in the material is whether better guidance should be provided to try and encourage people to use better materials or to leave it as a screen space that has a biodiversity function as well. So we can do some things through guidance. It's not as restrictive or as, you know, it's not something we can enforce against. But it, it does at least provide good practice to people and they can see the benefits of doing that, hopefully. In terms of things like ripping up trees and hedgerows, there's a, there's a current issue with, on a national level with things like tree preservation orders that they really only look at. And they can only really be put in place as a result of the amenity value of, of a tree. We're, we're lobbying government to try and broaden that out, to, to consider the, the carbon value and biodiversity value of, of trees as well. Because they don't just have that single function of being nice to look at, although they clearly are. They, they also have other functions as well. But if, as long as we're only able to apply TPOs, tree preservation orders for amenity reasons, that does limit some of our abilities to protect them for other reasons. But that's not part of this material in terms of an individual chopping down a tree because that sits outside of, of our control at the moment, other than through TPOs. But what we do say is, should we be going further in terms of tree replacement? Because clearly, I think at the moment we've got a one for three. So if you chop down one, you replace it with three, which doesn't really come close to replacing the carbon value that may have been lost by a mature tree. And some of the evidence that, that we've seen looks like more, more like 40 would be an accurate replacement. And I've even seen up to 100. So clearly the three for one, which, which, which was quite ambitious at the time, is already been proven to be probably slightly out of, out of date now. So there are things that we can do there. There's also things that other parts of the council are doing as well. And clearly it's not, it's not planning necessarily, but as a council as a whole, in terms of our messaging about climate change, I think there's so much more awareness of it than there's ever been before. The climate conversation that, that happened got so many people talking about it. And, and as tragic as they are, when we've seen such awful events like the floods in Germany or the wildfires in places like Russia or in Canada and the temperatures that they've had in the west of America. It gets people thinking about these issues. And if there's any one good thing that comes out of those tragic events, it's at least that people, it's more in their public consciousness. Final point about things like car parking standards. There's obviously a lot that the, the highways authority are doing about these issues. And we've got the connecting Leeds consultation that recently closed. And I know they're obviously going through a lot of those detailed responses now about how we better integrate public transport. And we're keen not to stand on their toes, to be supportive of them and to help their initiatives. But I think the kind of central point is that better designed places kind of breed more, more sustainable choices. If we make places that you can travel easily by foot or by bicycle, that, that, it doesn't force you to not use your car, but it at least gives you a positive choice to not use your car. It's not at the moment the scope of this document to be talking about parking standards. That's something that, that's covered through the Transport S P D, which is, which is still currently in development. But we'll obviously wait to see what comes out of the consultation to see whether the, the scope could perhaps include that in future iterations. I think that was all, all the issues councillor, but obviously come back if I didn't cover anything.
Okay, thanks very much, Adam. Jonathan?
No, that, that was a very full and helpful answer, Adam. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks very much. Katie?
Yes, thank you, Adam. Just firstly to briefly echo the comments of both Paul and Jonathan about the, whether when it's finished, it will have teeth, because I think that's really important. And when I read through the reports prior to this meeting, there were a number of things struck me. And one that I was just briefly scanning back to was the idea of buildings reducing carbon emissions to zero carbon standard. It, things like that, I'm going back onto Zoom, I couldn't find myself, I skipped off to find the document. You know, yes, absolutely. 100%, we need to be doing that. But if it's in there, will we then further down the line be able to impose that is, is, is when it, it really becomes important? But just to skip back to the questions you asked us at the beginning, you said, is this the right scope? And I think, yes, it is. What do we feel? Well, personally, I, I think it's hugely important that we are having climate conversations and, you know, from my personal point of view, we have to get to net zero. We have to do it and we have to make some massively difficult choices to do that. And, and so this fits into the whole climate agenda. So yeah, that's my personal, what do we feel? So yeah, that's my personal, what do we feel? Is there anything missed? I don't think so. I think it's very comprehensive. And having a look on my phone at the way that you can complete it. I like the fact that you can complete it in different sections because it's huge. And my biggest fear, and we've probably all been there, is you think, oh, I think I'll complete this survey. And then after a couple of minutes of doing question after question, you know, I can't be bothered anymore. And then you just stop. And I do think that is still a bit of a danger. But it's a difficult one, isn't it? Because if it's going to be meaningful, it needs to have lots of questions. But it does have the danger of people getting partway through and then saying, oh, that's too much for me. I think that's probably it for me.
Okay, thanks, Katie. Adam?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of the teeth aspect, obviously, I tried to cover off elements of that. I think particularly related to the zero carbon developments, the word there is viability. You know, it's absolutely crucial that we can demonstrate that this will work and is cost effective. The good news on that is that kind of early indications are that, you know, through the schemes that we know that have already delivered this. Not just in Leeds, but in other parts of the country is that so many strides can be made in terms of reducing the emissions. As long as you think about it at the earliest point. It's when you try and say retrofit buildings that it becomes quite expensive. But if, I think if developers start to enshrine this way of thinking quite early on in their design processes. It can be very effective and very deliverable. But we're obviously on a journey with developers on that. They're on their own journeys in terms of how they're working through these issues. And we've spoken to many of them as part of this week, as part of this consultation. And the messages we're getting are very positive. They're very keen to be involved in this and very keen to show their climate credentials as well. So I don't think we've got anything to fear there. I think we just need to make sure we get our evidence really, really tight on that. We can show that it's deliverable. Thanks for agreeing with the scope, that's really helpful. And thank you for the kind words about how we've organised it on the web. I mean, big shout out to colleagues in web team and graphics creative services. Who've done a fantastic job in pulling the material together, working alongside, obviously, us in planning. It's a real joint approach. And we're trying to do something a bit different with this, we're trying to make it easier to complete. I think it's the first one we've had where you could complete a consultation on your phone. But it's the way that we need to go in the future. So this is a really useful test for us. So hopefully it continues to work for you. And if you have any issues, obviously, just let us know.
Yeah, thanks very much, Adam. I mean, I think the only downside is the lack of the opportunity because of COVID to engage. Potentially face to face with people through droppings or whatever. But it's understood why that's not been a feasible component. Okay, well, no one else has indicated they wanting to speak. Helen, I don't know if you want to come back in briefly?
I've not got much to add. I think the board made some really valid points, especially about enforcement. And how we actually, you know, make sure our ambitions, the developers in particular, you know. Adhere to the ambitions of ourselves and, but more importantly, the people of Leeds. So that's something we'll work on always.
Okay, thanks very much. Right, we can move on to agenda item seven, the work schedule, which is on page two hundred and fifty nine. Wow. I think there are three elements to this that probably the board needs to recurse in the public meeting. Although we did have discussion of some of them in our pre-meeting. The first is what, how we approach the two requests for scrutiny that we received. From councillor Robinson and also from Tim McSherry on behalf of the disabled community. I think the feeling amongst members is that we will look at councillor Robinson's referral. There's not a lot we can do in the here and now. Obviously, we're not a decision-making body because of the fact that we're meeting remotely rather than in person. And actually, even if we were meeting in person and could make decisions, it probably wouldn't address the immediate issue of the road closure. But I think there was a consensus across the piece that there are maybe lessons to be learned. Or at least tested in terms of the process that have gone through that might be applied in the future. I think the second point relating to the reference from the disability group. Is that we acknowledge that councillor Hayden has indicated that she's going to have a further meeting. And that we will await the outcome of that further meeting. However, in order to get the logistics right, I think there was agreement that we should pencil in a specific physical board meeting. To discuss one or both of these referrals. And indeed, the way things are going, there may be others. So is that a fair synopsis of the discussion that we had? And the members who weren't present in the pre-meeting? Are you agreeable to that or do you have any other questions or comments to make? I'll take silence as agreement. And the only other item, unless there's anything that board members want to raise in addition. Are the draft terms of reference for our road safety inquiry that will begin in September and go on into October? I think they are pretty broad and allow us to look at virtually anything we want to. And I think that's always a good test of terms of reference, unless you're wanting to shackle people. And we certainly don't want to shackle ourselves. But are they agreeable or are there any other comments or observations that people want to make? Jonathan?
Thanks, Chair. In the paragraph two point one, scope for the inquiry list, where we want to make some recommendations. What I would like to add to that is looking at the criteria for. How we agree and implement road safety measures. I'm particularly thinking of pedestrian crossings and informal refuges, et cetera. The reason I'm asking this is it seems a very high bar you have to reach to get a pedestrian crossing or any sort of informal crossing. And the logic seems to be, we will go out and survey it and come back and say to you. No, you can't have a crossing there because not many people cross that road. You say, well, yeah, the reason they're not crossing that road is it's too dangerous to cross. You know, it's this reverse logic. It's like people used to say, oh, we don't want a disabled ramp because we don't get any disabled people here, you know. It's one of those. So I'd just like to reexamine or at least get some discussion on that particular process.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. I don't think there was any intention at all to exclude that. Because obviously, it's something that we all come up against. Against is probably the wrong adverb, but that we have to come to grips with as ward members as well as collectively. And it is something that we've looked at in the past. There was actually a referral a couple of years ago from Jonathan and his Horstford colleagues about the whole process of how. Crossing locations are determined. So yeah, I think absolutely we should revisit that because it is an integral part of the overall theme that we're pursuing.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I think you're pushing an open door on that one. So with that, well, it's not really an addendum because I think it would have come up anyway. We would have had the opportunity to discuss it. But I think there's no reason why it can't be another bullet point so that we are clear that that is something we want to, we want to look at specifically. With that addition, is everyone agreeable to those terms of reference? Yep, okay, that looks like a general yes. I don't think there's anything more to add into the work programme. Becky, have you got anything to throw in at the last minute?
No, I haven't, Chair.
Excellent, love it. Okay, so thanks very much, everyone, for your attendance. I think we've had another interesting set of topics and discussions and questions and responses. And no doubt, we will see each other in other forums between now and the next meeting. But that's on the twenty ninth of September. I suspect that the specific meeting to look at referrals will be before that. But obviously, in my usual fashion, I will consult members about the most convenient day. We won't find one, I'm sure that it's convenient to everybody. But just bear in mind that it will be a formal, physical meeting. And therefore, if you can't attend, you will need to have words with your appropriate people to find substitute.